Good evening, everybody. If anybody has any questions, again, the phone number 315-952-3795. Any deletions, additions, or corrections to the agenda?
Oh.
Dennis?
I'm good.
Okay, so first, or number two is the budget transfers. Lori and I met last week. We are meeting again this Thursday. We already know that franchise tax, Hamlin's revenues, fines are down. Our overages and shortages are up a little bit, so it kind of equals out with our revenue and our expenditures. So, but we will have some money left over in the municipal building. Some reserve accounts, stump grinder versus payment sewer reserves. So what I'd like permission to do is make year-end transfers with Lori into reserves. And to give you an example, in the municipal building, we have $5,000 that we haven't used. So I want to put that, we have a reserve, so I want to transfer that to a reserve. Later, Mike's got some salt shed and some boon ducker things for the DPW that I want to make sure we get transferred over. The union is looking for some vacation concession, so I wanted to transfer that over. So I just want permission with the approval of Lori and myself to make those year-end transfers in our budget before we close the year out. Right now, we look like we only budgeted about a $25,000 carryover. And we look like we're going to be well, well within that, closer probably to 200,000, maybe 250,000. So we're in good shape budget-wise, but I need to make those transfers with Lori at the end of the year. So I need a motion to authorize the mayor with the village clerk to make at year-end budget transfers into reserves as well as accounts that are overspent.
So moved.
I'm seconded by Dennis. Any questions? All in favor?
Hi.
Opposed? Next is meeting minutes of April 11th, 2020.
Make a motion, make except a minute or a second.
All right, we got to move by Mike, need a second. Okay, second by. So, Pat?
Go ahead.
So Dennis questioning the lights. And so what we were looking at and what Pat has come up with is, you know, the bollard lights that we used in, in, we're something like that along that side. Not streetlights, but more of a, and originally, this is through the county Main Street grant. So I think we're going to look at either, he had priced out four, but we're thinking of there six or eight, depending on how they space out and how they look. Yeah, that's, that's through the county, yeah. Pat, what was the total on that sidewalk grant? Or the sidewalk proposal for just the one in front of Oriental Star and the Babylon Oil Chain?
I want to say it was 28,000.
That's taking it out, putting it in, correct?
Yeah, it come, well, that's, that's just for Ross to put it back in place. And putting all the stuff up.
In front of the craftsman? We're not done fine lighting that yet, so. So we're a lot of projects in the village that people said could be done. Yeah. Any other questions on the meeting minutes? All in favor?
Hi.
Dennis?
Hi.
Next is abstract 21. They did today in the amount of $40,242.69. Need a motion? Moved by Dan, seconded by Pam. Any questions, Dan? Have you gone through these?
Yeah.
Okay. Any questions? All in favor?
Hi.
Opposed? Number five, Lori, year-end invoice approvals? Okay. Need a second?
I couldn't hear.
So it's just for any invoice that comes in between now and the end of the year, we give her approval to pay for it out of this year?
That's, okay, sorry, just couldn't hear some of that that's going on. Second.
Lori's muting herself tonight.
Okay.
So we got it moved by Dan, need a second?
Second.
Second by Mike. Any questions? Lori, what are those typically? Did you hear that, Mike?
I heard enough of it, yep. Aqua National Grid.
Yeah, attorney bills, just.
Yeah, yeah, no, no, I understand, I got it now, I just didn't hear exactly. It's hard to hear Dan and Lori.
It's okay. Dan can take his mask off, there you go.
No, no, I.
Opposed? Hey, Ted, Peter Street update?
Yep, after the last meeting, I wrote in a letter to Charles Welch. And I actually did get to speak with him last week. Our issue is in getting him to share information as the valuations he has done with the property. So he gave me the name of the person that did one of his evaluations. I drafted a letter and sent that to this person along with an authorization from Mr. Welch to send a copy of the valuation to me. Hopefully, that'll come. I did remind Mr. Welch that the courts are starting to open up again, and if we can't do a settlement, we just got to take it to the next level and drag them into it. And reminded him that that's going to be timely and expensive for everybody. So.
Thank you. Number seven is the village historian annual report. All of you should have gotten a copy. I just, I don't know if you want me to read it or not, or we just accept this as our annual report? Okay, so I'll read it. No, it's the end of our year, it's our last meeting, so I just wanted to accept the report. We need a motion to go ahead and accept the village historian. In 20 seconds. Moving in second. Any questions? I also want to thank Barbara for her hard work in continuing to do this. And I appreciate everything that she's doing for the village and keeping our history intact.
Just as a side, oh, go ahead and vote then, I just, hi.
Opposed? Side note, Mike?
Just as a side note to that, I have talked to her over the last couple of months here when everybody's been locked down. And she's busy collecting and collaborating all the things that are going on today as the coronavirus and the pandemic has been happening. So she not only helps with our history and memorializing that and keeping that alive, but she's also keeping records for the future historians to see. So it's just part of her program of what she's doing for everybody in the community.
Okay. Next is the sewer final agreement. So the county has, we are at the, Ted, if you can sign in here for a second. We are at the final version, the last one you have, Ted, is it. The INI portion of the contract will not be part of it. The is actually as of tonight at four o'clock was considering another way to work with the village on the INI, which is county paving or some other type of fund to set up to work on the INI credits. But right now, the agreement that Ted, that you have is the final agreement, which that covers the 24 hours a day we will continue to do as a village for our village residents. The out-of-village service fees that we collect will be continued to be collected. So there's people that are outside of our village that are tied to our system. That revenue will still come to the village. The INI, again, as I said, is not in the village or is not in this lease agreement. And the county is giving us some options, and we just got those tonight, so we're weighing those. I already have permission with approval of council to sign the agreement with WEP. Ted, is there anything else that we need from the attorneys from WEP to get this finalized?
I don't believe so. I'll go to that final version and just double-check it in the morning and confirm with you.
The, you know, the big three things were that we wanted to be able to continue the 24-hour service. We wanted to keep the service fees, which is only about $10,000 a year, but it helps pay for the labor and the materials to do those service calls. And then the INI is obviously one of the things that we couldn't get, come to an agreement with. But we'd like to get, I think we're going to move forward, we're not going to get agreement on that. But there are looking at other options to help the village with, you know, the one example, Pat, was, you know, do we have, I think the dollar figure is about 160,000, 170,000 short. So did we have $170,000 worth of possible paving projects that we could come up with that the county could help us with? I know, Pat, you handed us close to that this year a CHIPS request. So we might be able to get all that done this year, plus the balance. And I looked at that, there's probably going to be about another 85,000 that you're going to have available to use towards paving this year. And a lot of those paving projects are going to happen in Brookside, which is part, we did a lot of slip lining already in Brookside, correct? Pat?
What's that, Mark, on Brookside?
We did a lot of slip lining already in Brookside, so they were just trying to pave where we've already slip lined.
Yeah, yeah, we did quite a bit of slip line, and we got records of that, so we can show it to them.
Good. So Ted, if, if everything's in order, we don't need another motion, but I wanted to let the trustees know that that final agreement, if it's in place with you, I will be signing that as soon as you give me a clean document to sign.
Okay.
All right, any questions on that from the trustees?
No.
Yes. So what's going to happen for village residents is they're still going to call 637-6065. The answering service will dispatch the DPW. The DPW will go on the call. The only difference is the DPW then needs to log that call in the next morning to WEP and let them know what we did. And then if there's anything that we have to do to the sewer system, WEP now takes care of that. So other than the blockages and the cleaning out, the WEP is in charge of everything else. Okay, Pat?
Yep, are they doing anything with the laterals coming off the main, Mark? Because that's part of our system, the short laterals, the six-inch pipe that comes off the eight-inch mains.
Ted, can you look at that?
Yeah, I'll see what the agreement says.
I know, Pat, that they said when they camered, that the worst, the biggest offender that they found with the leakage was on Cashion.
Yeah, it could be, we've never done anything with Cashion up on that end.
So right now, that's where they want to, they have contracts in place, ready to execute, but they can't execute till we sign. But that's going to be the first place that they start. The INI offset is now two to one. Lori and I spoke, we don't need to change our local law. Mike, you just need to know that when a developer or someone comes in and they're looking for credits, it's no longer one to one, it's two to one. So if they need 500 gallons, the old offset would have been 500, now they need 1,000.
Two to one.
So our credits are gone. Or we, or we've satisfied the debt service for the Signal Home project, which right now is 350,000. We're going to get 200,000 as part of this lease agreement, so that leaves us with $150,000 in debt. We cannot pay off the loan early. So the other, the motion that I'm going to ask for is that we set up a WEP lease reserve when Lori gets a check for $200,000 to transfer into that account. And then in the next budget cycle, she can pay the lease payment for the sewer system or the debt service out of that $200,000 account that we set up. It'll be similar to the water fund, but we want to set it up now, so when she does receive the check, she has an account to put it into. So I need a, someone to approve that motion.
I'll move.
Need a second?
Second.
Any questions?
Does that need to be updated in the village code?
No, because it's just the lease, we still technically, you know what I mean? They're going to maintain and take care of it and, and, but we still technically own it. The two to one, you mean?
Yeah.
Yeah, like, I think you're right about that. Because it's very specific in the code now. I talked to Lori about amending the current provision to make it a little bit, a little bit more generic. So if the county changed the ratio, we don't have to do a local law every time.
Okay.
Yes, yeah, because if they do these projects in the town of Anly, it's all three of them, then we, we would go, we might lose the one-to-one offset completely because the plant will be within compliance. So Ted, are you going to draft something, or are we all?
Yes, I'll draft something and have it ready for you guys to look at at the next meeting.
Okay. Any other questions on this WEP agreement? All in favor?
Hi.
Opposed?
Hi.
That was I is in favor, Dennis?
Yes, it is.
Thank you. Code enforcement, Mike, how is working remotely going?
Uh, well, it's, you know how it is, all the technical issues and IT disruptions. Things are picking up, I don't have anything in particular to report, but it's, you know, they lifted the floodgates last week with the executive order. And it's slowly been coming in quickly, if that makes sense. But, you know, I think I talked to everybody in the village today. Permits are coming in good, the complaints, you know, the good weather's starting and it's going to be full throttle from here out, I think.
Okay. The grass complaints, I gave you one, but has that been, has there been a lot of those or no?
A few. They're, they're taking, taking care, we usually after Memorial Day, you know, the weather's starting to cooperate where they can actually get in the lawn or they run out of excuses. But the one up in Brandon gear, the daycare center was cutting it for the last few years, right? And now FOGU has told them, you're not using the parking lot anymore, so don't cut the grass. So I did get an email contact today to reach out to them, to remind them they need to cut it. It's like two foot tall, it's ridiculous.
Yeah. Yeah, I drove by it yesterday when I was going to the cemetery, so. The other one is the Shadix property, is he in good, is that all set?
He's, he needs a couple of signatures here and there to update.
I saw that here today, yep. I signed that, I'll put that in, I'll put that in your box.
Okay, so he should be, uh.
Oh, yeah.
Pretty cool.
The Gage, the Gage house, did you look at that?
Rearding what?
Oh, they haven't mowed the lawn at all.
I thought I saw somebody mow on there the other day, so maybe it's done now. No.
We got, we got a complaint on Warren Street where somebody, Pat and Mike looked at it, where they covered from the sidewalk to the road with mulch. So what did you find out on that, Mike?
I looked into the code and all it says, you're supposed to maintain it.
It's right at the, you know, that first bottom.
So I don't know if it's actually maintaining it, removing it, mulching it, but what do you think?
Well, I mean, the rest of the village is grass, so I don't want to start seeing like bits and pieces of it. Because grass, you can, we could mow if we needed to or hire somebody to mow. We're not going to pay for mulching those areas, I don't think, I think it should be grass.
There's. I agree with Mike.
If I can, if I can, China, there's only a couple of places around the village, but Madeline Bort over on Elm Street's got flowers growing between hers. So you just may want to drive around, take a peek at a few of them.
Is it full of flowers or just a few in front of like around a tree or something?
No, it's, it's, she's got flowers all the way down through a little bit, and she was out watering it, and went by.
Okay.
Well, I think one of the problems.
Flowers can be mowed, mulch can't be mowed. So, you know, I mean, I don't care if people plant flowers in there necessarily, but if you start mulching it, then the only answer is mulch. And who's going to weed it and who's going to take care of it? Then, uh, you plant flowers in there, you can weed eat them off or mow them off if that becomes an issue or a problem, that's a fix.
Mark sent you a picture, it looks like she just threw paper down real quick, some weed paper and threw mulch on it. It's the weed papers hanging over the curb edge, so it's, it's not really done in a good manner. I mean, it's just like she just had something to do and threw it down quick.
Pam, do you have any thoughts?
I can stop by and tell her to, to put it back to grass, you know?
I think that's the way to do that. Is there anything other questions for Mike in code enforcement? Hey, Mike, thank you. Fire Department, DeCunella purchases, Paul, are you on? We'll come back, he's, he's there, but he's not answering. DPW, Mike? Projects?
So the projects, you probably all have a list, but the first question on his project list is, is the 2021 budget unfreeze? Or what are we doing with those funds? As we go into 21, 2020.
The budget is frozen.
Okay.
Until I release the budget.
Okay, that's fine. Roadwork, so there's money in an account for for them to do, find county, Sioux Co. to do a county contract, lower Brookside Lane and Margolane. And then the other paving would have to be scheduled after we know what we're getting for CHIPS money is what I understand from what's written.
Right, so Patrick, I need you to send me those two quotes for $140,000 so that I can email those to the county. And then you should look at another, if we need more roads done in Brookside to fix the same problems that we're fixing with drainage, I would assume we would end up with another $80,000.
Yep, I've got quotes on most of the streets up there, I can get to you.
Okay, because what, we have 160, plus we're not sure on the extreme winter money. And then needed $100,000 to finish the Salt Springs project, bridge and sidewalks, or 75,000 to 100, somewhere in there. But the balance was used, so it's going to be, paving's going to be done later as soon as we know what the balance is needed for the sidewalk project. But at least let's get those three proposals to me so that I can give those to Shannon from WEP to see if they will fund those as part of this WEP agreement.
Yep, I'll send them out tomorrow.
Thank you.
Curbside pickup notices, we had some printed based upon our previous conversations at meetings. And we're working on the future of hard fill and construction debris as to what we're going to be doing with that. Sidewalks, so you mentioned the bridge, and that's supposed to be beginning after the first of June here, around the first of June. Has anybody heard anything different from anybody?
No.
We turn next is the Western Gateway sidewalks and lighting. And we talked about the section on between Verdic and Limestone Plaza. And we're still working on the other along from Euclid to, along Mott to Genesee and Genesee to South Verdic Street, that's still under.
Is everybody okay with those lower bollard lights versus the taller streetlights in the, on that side of Genesee?
Do you got a picture of them or?
Yes, I can, Pat, can we send a picture to the trustees so they can see what they look like?
Yeah, I can send them one of those, and they are solar lights too.
Oh, yeah, I forgot to say that, I apologize. They're very similar to, I mean, they have a different top, but the color's going to be the same as the Sternberg color that we use. And the height is going to be very similar to the ones we already have in Beard Park.
Yeah, if you go on First Light Technology, and then it's PLB is the bollard light that we're looking at.
What's the name of it?
First Light Technology. And then if you go to the bollards, just look for the PLB one.
He was just giving you a website to go to to see it, but he's going to send a spec sheet out so everybody can see what they look like. Okay.
So these are, these are four feet high, basically?
Yes.
We already have streetlights there, so rather than duplicate streetlights, it was to eliminate the walkway. That's why we thought of this, or that's why.
Yeah, because if you, if you look at the other side, our, our streetlights look nice, they're kind of dwarfed by the big streetlights, so.
I don't have a problem with that, what you guys are talking about, but the, the streetlights, at least the one I'm looking at here, doesn't really fit in with what we have been doing. So I don't know if I'm looking at the wrong design, I did go to the PLB one, I just don't know if it's the same.
You've got to go to the bollard tab, then the PLB.
Yeah, I did that.
Yep. That was Rick's company for what's for sidewalk down through there.
I like the concept, what you guys said, that's my opinion.
Number six, Mike?
Well, the right way, but just on number five too, that Gary's coming back and he's starting those signs that we are proven through that county grant also. That'll be starting in June, early June. Right-of-way permit, we just need to finish the, the cost, I guess, or the, we talked about that last time, and I think you were just going to come up with some plan.
Okay. I'll go down to see, Pat.
Yes, they go hell, the damaged streetlight is still waiting, it won't be here till July, so that's just an ongoing thing. Limestone Bishop Brook Restoration Grant, that proposal's out to bid currently. Bridges over Walnut Street, we, that's still about the same, waiting on some repairs there. Striping in the parking lots and crosswalks are almost done. And the Stormwater MS4 and BL finished the report, and it's sent to the DC, and it's on the village website. Beyond that, under purchases, if you have the memo at the top of the page, is the undercoting, the boon ducker that we approved, I believe at the last meeting. That won't be done until after the, this particular budget year, so we're asking that $3,300 to be held over from the 2019, 2020 budget to pay for that when it does happen. And the salt shed cover replacement is $8,700. And again, that wasn't done this spring because of the freeze, I'm not knowing what was going on with a lot of things, obviously. So we're asking that that money, which was budgeted in this particular budget year, would be held over for next year.
15 years, so.
Yeah, it's been a long time. So I'd make that a motion that we would have that, Lori, and you include that when you encumber the money from this budget year to next year.
All right, move by Mike, need a second?
Second.
Seconded by Pam. Any discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
We had, at the last meeting, a discussion, we had a brief discussion about a tree that Dan Cunella asked about on 303 Lincoln Street, about taking it down. There's wires involved in that tree, so Pat has a quote from Bartlett Tree, which we were asked to get for you to think about, $575. I don't know that that tree is detrimental, one, I haven't looked at it or gotten any other opinion out, I don't know if that needs to be done immediately or if we want to do it.
Hey, Pat, can you review it and let us? So what I'd like to do is give permission to. So what I'd like to do is give permission to Pat thinks it needs to be taken down, then then approve this motion. If he doesn't think, then we wait until we're, you know, we we need to get it.
Back on our regular budget and and spending abilities. So I make that motion.
Move by Mike, need a second.
Well, I'll second.
Second.
Okay.
Maybe trimming will take care of it.
Did you hear that, Pat?
Yes, I did.
So if trimming will take care of it, let's just leave it up. But if not, if you think it needs to come down, let's get it taken down.
Okay.
Favor, all in favor?
Hi. Hi.
Okay, there's another tree that while they were giving us an estimate estimate on that particular tree on Lincoln, there's a tree at one twenty one Margot that um I talked to Pat about it briefly. He might have more information on it. But again, it's within wires. And it's a tree that the homeowner has requested to come down. I don't know its overall condition, but that estimate is eight hundred and forty dollars. And again, whether we want to take, you know, take a look at it, if it's detrimental and needs to come down, that's one thing. If you want to wait till we um are back into uh typical budgeting and spending habits, then I'm I'm okay with that too, or whatever. Just a matter of what needs to be done there.
I agree with that, Martin. If you want to put that in a motion again, just like.
Well, that's a motion. I'll I'll we'll look at it and see what really needs to be done uh immediately. And spend up to eight hundred and forty dollars if it needs to come down. Otherwise, we will evaluate it and have it taken down when we're back into our normal spending habits.
Yeah, that's why we can't touch it. Normally we would touch it, but the if it's in wires, we're not allowed to go near it.
Finally decided after Pat talked to him. They took it.
I can't hear.
Very good at talking to them.
He's saying thank you for doing a good job of.
Freeze and taking Nat National Grid to do it.
Yeah, anytime we can, we try to get them to do it in the primaries. They won't do it if it's the secondary wire, but primaries, if we kind of bowl them over a little bit, they'll touch them and take them down for us. So.
At last is uh summer hires um for the DPW, we have four employees, Alex Way, Mitch Holcraft, Joe Avellino, and Corey Walters uh effective today and at a rate of eleven eighty an hour uh for thirteen weeks. Need a motion to go ahead and accept those four employees.
So moved.
Second.
Seconded by Pam. Any discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
Post? DPW?
I don't know unless Pat does.
Yeah, we do have one after waterside comments, there'll be a B executive session for personnel matter uh to include the attorney. Paul Hildreth, are you on?
Saw his car go around back. He might not be back.
Okay, he's on the call, so we'll keep going. Yeah. No, go ahead.
So he has um part-time hired John Lasko. He would like to City of Watertown hire a part-time.
Okay. Moved by Dan, need a second?
Second.
Any discussion? So this is replacing Nate Baker. Nate Baker went from part-time to full-time. So uh we're just replenishing our part-time ranks uh by making this addition. Mike. All in favor?
Hi.
Next. Fire an EMS or EMS? He has him. He has him. Second page is. So Gabby. Gabby Stoffer, and she's a volunteer medic. So we need a motion to go ahead and accept with approval, all the approvals in place.
So moved.
Move by Dennis, need a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mike. Any discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Next applicant.
We got um Richard Snyder.
Bridget Snyder.
Exterior firefighter. Need a medic, paramedic.
So moved. Moved by Dan, need a second? Seconded by Pam with all the approvals in place. Any questions? All in favor?
Hi.
Post? Um, next is the uh vacation request. Go ahead. So I'm not really sure. I'm not really. Okay, so why don't we do a pending? Move by Dan, need a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mike, and that's with all the approvals. Any questions? All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Next is, so the chief in the union, we talked about this this last meeting, the chief in the union, um, there's twenty? Let's just say thirty weeks left, but there's like forty eight weeks of vacation left. The chief have worked out an agreement. Will not affect the chief's budget. But that will get all the vacation requests, whether it take a vacation or get paid for a vacation, but it won't affect on the budget. So I'm asking for permission that the um village board authorize the mayor, the chief and the clerk to work with the union. This will not be part of the contract. It will be a one-time COVID vacation relief request for vacation with the fire department. Um, so we have the parameters. I've looked at it. There's a couple of things that I agree with. There's a couple of things I don't agree with. Uh, rather uh than delay this, we'd like to get this started. So I'd like permission from the board to go ahead and negotiate with the union, the chief and the clerk to get this settled with our fireman union. Uh, they are willing to work with us and I appreciate their efforts.
So moved.
Move by Mike, need a second?
Second.
Seconded by Dennis. Any questions? All in favor?
Hi.
Post?
Hi.
Okay, so next is the Waterside Hybridge Commons and um Greg, I'm going to invite you in. Greg, you are now live, okay?
Thank you. Hello, everyone.
Hello.
This is Greg Scrobbo. So Ted, can you give us a little update?
Sure, we've um so since uh the last time we were in front of board, which I believe was August sixteenth of uh nine uh two thousand and nineteen. Um, we've progressed with getting uh certain other issues um either resolved or um uh at least to a point where we know what the ultimate resolution can be. Um, we've uh we've gotten feedback from the state DOT. Relative to driveways, that sort of thing. Um, we have not gotten anything back from the county that I know of. Um, but essentially driveways are all kind of the same as they were before and they're previously approved. Um, the uh the FEMA study, which was a big one, we finally have a resolution on that. And we had to make some uh some minor grading changes, but we're able to get a site plan that worked uh within the FEMA modeling for for uh no increase uh or or no impact within the floodway. So we're in good shape there. Uh, we've been in front of planning board several times, uh, worked on some issues with them. I think uh we've made some changes that were met uh with a lot of uh positive uh feedback from the planning board relative to elevations, uh um character to building, the way to height of the building is kind of um brought down a little bit with some architectural uh features such as the pitch roofs and that sort of stuff. So um we're kind of at a point right now where we uh we're back in front of uh the the village board with the hopes that uh we can keep moving forward with uh the variances and the PUD and that sort of uh uh party approval.
Ted, do you want to give an update of what we need to work, start working on?
I'm sure. Uh, Greg pretty well described what the applicant has gone through so far to get to this point. As the board, I'm sure recalls, it's a proposed to consolidate a number of parcels of the intersection of Genesee and Hybridge. And the applicant would like the village board to create PUD that would involve mixed uses. As I recall, uh, on the lower level or commercial uses up above forty plus apartments of one size or another. Um, earlier today, I did email to the board. Um, a couple of items just for future reference. One was part one of the applicant's seeker EAF form. A copy of the site plan was attached, a summary from Karen Shetson of uh how the applicant has gotten to where it has. And the resolution that was issued by the Anadaga County Planning Board, uh, all just for the board's reference. Uh, the last item included was a proposed resolution. At this point, uh, in order to proceed, the next logical thing to do would be to address seeker and the board. Uh, we've talked about designate itself as lead agency for the coordinated review. So the resolution that was attached to the email is a resolution that was just what I said to board. It'll be lead agent for seeker purposes of a coordinator view. And indicates that uh the village needs to send out a packet to the other involved agencies to start the thirty day clock. See if anybody else objects. As an aside, Matt Napparella has been retained by the village and we're waiting for Matt input to see um from an engineering perspective, if he has any questions or concerns uh for the applicant to address. And so that's kind of where we're.
Okay, so I'll read the resolution. Whereas the village of Bayville is a municipal corporation located in Anadaga County and governed by the Village Board of Trustees Board. And whereas the board has received a zone change application for property located at the intersection of West Genesee Street and Hybridge Street, tax MAC parcel eighteen oh six oh six one oh seven one oh seven two oh eight oh nine point one. Requesting the current zone classification be changed to PUD Plan Unit of Development. And whereas the owner developer proposes to construct a five-story mixed-use building with related accessory improvements, the plan and whereas based on the size of the parcel and the scope of the proposed development, this project would be classified as an unlisted action under State Quality Review Act seeker and implement implementing Regulation Six NYCCR six one seven. Whereas in accordance with Six NYCRR six one point seven point six, a coordinated seeker review of an unlisted action requires an establishment of lead agency among the involved agencies. Whereas Six NYCRR six point one seven two defines lead agency as an un in involved agency principal responsible for undertaking funding or approving an action. Therefore, responsible for an environmental impact statement is required in connection with the action and for the preparation and filing of the statement if one is required. Where it is the intent of the board to declare itself intent to act as secret lead agency for the purposes of assessing potential environmental impacts associated with the plan, including the preparation of a full environmental assessment EAF and subsequent notice of determination. Now therefore be resolved, the board shall one prepare a secret lead agency coordination package including the following components. Full EAF part one project information, the list of permits and approvals EF part one and project information. List of involved interested agencies EAF part one project information. Coordination requests, I was asking for the following information from involved agencies. Objections, if any, to the village board of trustees acting as seeker lead agency. Identification of issues that should be addressed by the seeker process. Number two, distribute the lead agency coordination package to all involved agencies to initiate a maximum thirty day lead agency coordination period. Number three, implement subsequent activities to prepare and file subsequent documents as may be necessary to comply with the seeker and its implementing and regulations, including completion of the full EAF part two project impacts impacts and their magnitude and three, evaluation of importance of impacts and a notice of determination. That is the resolution in part one. So we need to adopt that resolution. Does someone want to make a motion? No, we're just adopting the the lead agency tonight.
Oh, the leading.
Yes. All right, move by um Dan, need a second?
Second.
Seconded by Pam. Ted, is there anything that we missed?
Nope, I think I got it. Taken care of.
Questions from the trustees?
Yeah, I have a question. Are we by doing this, is this just one more step in the process for uh approving a PUD or considering a PUD? Is it required to do that?
It's, yes, it's a step that's required before the board can take any action on the applications for both the PUD and the plan.
Okay. So I get that part. My question is going to be the same question I had last year. You know, we're considering, and I'm looking at the drawings right now and I'm I'm sure they're nice if they're rendered out, whatever. Um, but you know, I'm looking at the drawings and A, it's five stories and B, it looks like there's a drive-through drawn into these uh drawings and I I just I'm just struggling trying to understand why we're spending time on something that i- it's just so outside of what we normally would have in this particular area in in the village. You know, I just caution everybody to make sure that we're not going down a road that we don't want to go down and we're wasting our time when we might be wasting the client, the developers' time. I mean, I don't think I've ever seen a drive-through proposed here. And now there is one. I it has to be a drive-through. The way it's the way it's drawn.
Yeah. The other issue is the parking issue, which I don't know has been resolved yet.
Right, that's.
Whether this is something that should or shouldn't be discussed unless that is. I I don't have the answers. I'm just ask bringing up the point. That's all.
But going back to Dennis's question, this starts the process of doing a thorough and due diligence and looking at the documents, looking at the environmental issues and getting questions answered to our questions, and then we make a decision. No, no, we haven't started the PU.
Well, I, Mark, I understand that. I mean, I I totally understand where you're coming from. I just, I I again, I'm struggling with why we're even wasting why we're considering something that the odds are if it if it came to us and we approved the seeker and, you know, I'm not going to vote for something like this. And I don't know what everybody else's feelings are, but I we've never number one, there's some things in here that we've never approved. This is way outside of what we normally do. So I I again, I would love to see it in it at least and start making decisions based on what we think it's going to be, not what this is almost like, well, you got to approve it to see what it's going to be. And and that's my only hangup. I mean, you know, every developer has come in, I think, should get their fair share. I just think that you should see what they really what's reasonable to build or what's most plausible to be approved. I mean, the planning board is never going to approve a drive-through.
The planning board, just so you know, we sent it to the planning board. The planning board actually sent it back to us with their approval.
With they approved the drive-through?
They approved the in concept, this project.
Okay.
Not the drive-through, but the the concept of five stories and what they saw, which is what they presented to them and they.
They they said they they said. They, they said they, they said they.
Dennis, hold on. They sent it to us with a positive, um, recommendation. So now it's our turn to look at this and make our comments known and our concerns known, and we're working with this document. And your, and your terms are duly noted.
Yep.
Yeah, and the current issue is environmental review of the project. It does not mean that if the board determines that there are no adverse environmental consequences, uh, that doesn't require the planning board to approve the project. Technically, the environmental review is separate and distinct from the site plan approvals. So whether, you know, I, I guess you go ahead at one step at a time and see where you end up.
Okay, any other questions? All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Pam. Against?
Uh, I'm against it.
Okay. Dennis is no. The. Yes. Dennis, you have to explain why you're to be lead agent for Lori.
So I have to explain a vote now?
Yes.
I don't think we should be, uh, I don't think that I would ever approve something like this or vote for it, so why waste our time viewing something that doesn't make sense to me?
Okay.
I'm not in favor.
Okay. So Ted, what's the next step?
Um, we can just continue it to the next meeting. We're waiting on input from Matt Napparella in order for the board to intelligent go through part two of the environmental assess form where we address the eighteen questions on environmental impact. So that's kind of where we're at.
Okay. So we will, is that a public hearing, Ted?
No, it's not.
Okay, until we, we, until we get all the documents and we get the review from our engineer, then we have the, then the public hearing on the seeker review.
For seeker, technically, you're not required to have a public hearing. It's only for the local.
Just the zone change if we get to that part. Greg, do you have any questions to the board of trustees?
Nope.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Greg off now. So roundtable. Ted, anything?
Um, just one item. Now that, uh, June is upon us, I presume it's okay for me to, uh, contact the representative for Pat Bundy and see if we can't get go forward on the purchase of that land.
Yes.
That she owns. Okay. And Lori wanted to wait until June. At one point.
We're good. We have the contract. It's signed.
Yep.
Anything else, Ted?
Nope.
Mark? The Bundy property. I have signed the contract with the approval of the board of trustees. We were waiting until we got the contract from the county before we proceeded with all the documentation. Michael?
Me, Michael?
You, Mike Small.
Okay, um, so the flower pots will be out by Friday. They are short-staffed because of the COVID, and they are scheduled to be out by Friday of this week.
Are we gonna, do we get a reduction on the fee because they're out of weekly?
I will ask for that. I did not, uh, get that confirmation. Uh, donation-wise, we're approximately ten thousand eight hundred dollars towards the project. And I did offer that we could possibly send the DPW to pick up pots if that was a problem with getting them out or whatever, so.
Okay.
Other than that, um, you just have the regular things, uh, the yoga thing and the complaints.
I didn't bring that up. Yeah, if you want to bring that up, I didn't have that on my list.
Oh, okay. So you, we got an email from Karen about someone that wants to have a yoga class in Baird Park from ten to eleven AM on Saturday, June twentieth, if everything is, um, acceptable with the rules of the county and the state to have a gathering at the park. They intend to keep the social distancing. And the only request they had of us was to have the park mode, I believe, the day before. Which is in here, but I didn't read it exactly right now. But anyway, um, I would make a motion that we would allow that to happen. If they can't do it in June, then they wanted to, uh, they will postpone it and reschedule it when they can have it. And we'll probably just tell them they need to come back to us with a date and a time to make sure nothing else happens to be going on at the same time, but I would make a motion that we allow them to use the park that day.
By Mike?
I'll second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Hi.
Opposed? Mike, any?
No, that's all I had. It's just that.
Dennis.
I was just gonna, um, say, number one, nice job on DPW getting the parks, um, right for Memorial Day weekend. They look great going into them. Um, and then second on the, uh, the noise complaint for the guns, um, I wanted to say, Mark, I thought you, you know, what you said was excellent in the email. As someone who, you know, I, I grew up shooting and I still shoot, and I love to shoot, and it's a lot of fun, but what that guy did for three, four hours is just over the top, and I did read Ted's email, and I think obviously our, our options are limited, but, um, hopefully we can encourage Ted to encourage this person to be a little bit better neighbor because that was, that's a lot, you know, so.
Yeah, and if you haven't had a chance to read Ted's email, uh, you know, it did come out late today, but, you know, we are, are pretty limited, and I think the town understands that, but I think if there's enough, you know, creative looking at things and trying to figure out different ways to look at this. You know, I just, none of us would want to live next to that, and none of us would.
Yeah, yeah, three hours is a long time to shoot, and that means you had a lot of people there, and and it is fun, don't get me wrong, but that's a long time.
I did speak with, um, uh, Rob Hillbrand from State Parks, and he, they have had their counsel all the way up into Albany, look at it, and there is no violation. There is, you know, there's really, their, their hands are tied too, so. And they, and they want to make sure that everybody understands this is not a park issue, but they did look at it to see if there was anything they could do to help or, or change, and there really isn't anything that they can do at this present moment.
Yeah. It's a good neighbor thing.
Yeah.
Wow.
It's a good neighbor thing. Anything else, Dennis?
I'm all set.
Pam?
No, uh, I was.
Mike's on.
Yes, thank you, Mike.
The pot man. And then, uh, Dan? They were supposed to start today. Anything else, Stan?
All right, just thanks again to Pat Masse for taking care of his team.
So at the, um, I have a couple of things. At the next meeting, I would like to come back as a set of trustees in this building. We will make sure that we're all socially distanced, uh, and that we will be setting up a, uh, Facebook Live or some type of, um, media, um, to send out. So it'll just be the trustees, Lori, and Ted. Uh, and I think we have enough tables and enough room to socially distance, so I'd like to be back together as a group. So at our next meeting, we'll be back together. We talked about the Signal Hill thing. Thank you, Ted, for doing that. Got an email from a resident on Route Five about the Jake breaks. Uh, they live in Southfield, uh, and the Jake breaks coming down Route Five are just their houses and, and, uh, making it, you know, not a, a neighborhood that, that's desired as much as it used to be. And I, and I wanted to see if these, I know it's not our jurisdiction because it's Route Five and it's a state right-of-way. I wanted to write a letter on behalf of the board of trustees to our state representatives, asking for that to, to be looked at, uh, by the DOT and maybe be a pilot program for no Jake breaks on that in, in the village of Fayetteville along that section. Okay. Look, I think Dan's in favor of that. Anybody having concerns with that?
No, I'm fine with it.
Yeah, I agree with Dan.
Okay.
And Mike, and Michael.
Okay. Um, May twenty, May twenty-seventh is the, um, so a couple of our properties that the, that are in the town, the assessment, what, um, so I'm asking for permission by the board of trustees to plead our case as a village against these, uh, increases in our assessment for the DPW garage, Duguid Park, and actually now Burdick Street. Um, so the grievance is May twenty-seventh. Right, so I'm asking, I'm gonna ask for some latitude with them. So, because our meeting was today, so. Anybody have an issue if I kind of try to grieve our?
No, try it.
On behalf of the village residents, because I've heard from several of those residents that their assessments went up, any range from thirteen to sixteen to eighteen to fourteen, all over.
It's not only that they. It's not that they've only gone up. They go up, they've gone up the last three years consecutively. In my neighborhood, anyway, my house, so I'm sure with a lot of the houses they have in the village.
Yeah, mine went up six percent, I think.
Last thing is that I, uh, Lori drafted a letter for me to, to the governor's office. The governor, um, I, I'll read it to you. On behalf of the residents of Village of Fayetteville, I'm writing to request interest-free period of payment for taxes extended pursuant to Section nine twenty-five dash A of Real Property Tax Law for the Village of Fayetteville. As you know, the COVID pandemic has placed a financial burden on many residents that have been unable to work or have been furloughed. We have seen several residents pay their village taxes directly who do not use escrow accounts through financial institutions where they have monies in reserve. We sincerely appreciate your consideration of granting the extension to our village community and hereby, uh, and thereby providing some additional relief to our residents during this difficult time, and this is based on a NICOM uh, recommendation that we sent. It's twenty-one day grace period, uh, so that they're not charged late fees, uh, for twenty-one days. Any trustees have an issue with that letter?
No.
Okay, that's all I have. We need a motion to go executive session, uh, to include the trustees and, and Lori and Ted. There'll be no action taken after.
So moved.
Moved and seconded by Dennis. Any questions?